Is to discuss the town manager transition, appoint an interim town manager. I don't, I don't think Chris is on this, Chris Senior, no? No, okay. I think the obvious thing to do is, is if Michelle is willing and able is to appoint. Uh, Michelle as an interim town manager. I'd like to open it up for discussion.
Firstly, I'd make an immediate motion for that in that regard. But.
I support it too, but would love to hear from Michelle.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I mean, I thank you for the opportunity. And I appreciate the, I appreciate the confidence in me to step into this role. I'm, I'm happy to do it and provide stability to the town during this transition.
I'm supportive.
I'm, I'm supportive as well. I think Michelle has. Come up a long way through the ranks and has shown from dealing with the procurements. And the project management at the assistant town manager level that, that she's able to take on this new challenge.
I, I agree wholeheartedly. And Michelle, I don't have an iota of concern about your skills and abilities. But like the rest of us, you're flesh and blood. And there's a lot that's going on and. A lot that needs attention, not only to get us through Monday evening. But before we know it will be in budget season. And I'd like the board to think about perhaps. Um, seeing if, before we begin the process for an official search, which we will do. There, there's a process involved and, and we need to take some time to think about how we want to do it. There might be an opportunity to get Michelle some support from perhaps a retired. Town manager who might want to come in for a couple of days that might know, you know, some things to take some of the workload. Some of the relief. And. It would be at Michelle's discretion what would get delegated or not get delegated. I don't know how she feels about this. I'm just spitballing this out loud. For the first time.
Ellen, I'm going to fully endorse your comment. I'm going to say that off the bat. I think. That getting up and running, not the word, I don't feel we've been left in a bad place, but Michelle's going to need all the help she can get. So. Your comment is, it was actually something I was going to say, so I fully endorse it. You know, Michelle's with Michelle's approval and someone that can be a. A good backstop. For lack of a better word.
No, not at all.
I, I think this is implied in your suggestion, but I would want to make sure Michelle has some say in who we bring in.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, she might know someone, you know. Could be as simple as. You know, Michelle has indicated to me, there's been a plethora of, of document requests and maybe someone to manage that or, or. There, there are certain things. Cause Michelle's going to have to broaden her scope. There are certain things that, that just take time. And I see Chris Senior's on the call, so you know, maybe Chris has some suggestions. You might know someone, may, do we go to the MMA? I, I know when we did it for the schools. We got a retired business manager. You probably remember him, Chris John Tuffy from Ducksperry. And he came in three days a week. He, he knew the job. He quickly learned the system. He could run the reports. He could. He could do a lot of, you know, the, the roach things. And I don't say that in a minimizing way of the town manager's position. But you know, there are some perfunctory tasks that, that happen that maybe somebody could help us with.
There, there are a number of folks out there now. Peter Warren is being one. He's the retired manager of Norwell. Who has not been able to stick, just like John Tuffy used to joke, retirement couldn't, didn't stick with him. And he, he's just wrapping, he just wrapped up in Marshfield. We're in a more intense role and I think he probably would be very. Grateful to be in a much less intense support role than what he's just experienced. But he's just an example. I know there's a number of others. The Collins Center has a pool of candidates like that and.
There, there's three that I would say off, offhand minus individual people. I, I would say definitely MMA, um, the Collins Center would, which was spoken by Chris. And I think also the, the agency out there. And I, I can't remember their name, but it was, it was actually the agency that, that found Chris when he was looking for the job at Hawkington. And they do, they do town manager and other, other searches. I think between. Some combination of those three, we can get a, a retired town manager. And I think the important thing to remember is, is that. If Michelle is moving up to interim, that leaves a hole of the, of, of those hours from an assistant town manager. So. Having, having a retired town manager come in will help. You know, help with that gap because it, it's, you have to look at the, you know, total labor hours that are expended. So we're, we're. We are going to be short at some end. It's just trying to. Trying to shorten the amount, amount that you will be short by, so.
Okay. Great. All right. So you know, after, after Monday, oh, today's Friday. Almost end of the business day. I mean, Michelle, do you know Peter Warren? No.
I mean, certainly I've met him before. Chris, you're unmute.
Unmute, yeah.
Sorry, I'm defaulting to mute. He was the town manager in Norwell. Darlene Sullivan worked for him for years and Kim did too, actually. Kim worked for him before he, she came to, Kim Ryan worked for him before she came to us.
Sometimes a known entity is, is a bit better.
I think John Clifford has his hand up, yeah.
I was just about to say that. I saw it. Thank you, David. Mr. Clifford?
Good afternoon. I can reach out to the Collins Center, Bernie Lynch's firm. And Peter Warren, I have the contact information for all of them and just ask. Number one, who's available and, and ask them to send letters of interest to the board so that you can consider it. Obviously give Michelle an opportunity to. Look at it too and weigh in in terms of who might be the better fit, but. There's a number of vacancies out there right now, so it's, it's kind of a moving target in terms of who's actually available to come and help out.
Okay, yeah, I would appreciate, we all would appreciate that, John, if you would do, do so, you know. Um, early next week. Okay.
That seems like an elegant solution. I think that would be great.
Yeah.
It'll give us a list, hopefully a list.
Okay, so.
But I. Put something in this and so, you know, I know it's agenda wise and we're talking about the transition. And discussed or not discussed, and I don't know how Chris feels about this or. Michelle, I'm wondering during the transition as Chris is. Moving on to hopefully greener pastures and more settled. Would it? Be. Helpful to Michelle to have Chris at town meeting. He knows the articles, he set them up. And I, I want to put that out there. I, I, me personally, I endorse it because I don't think that. Chris should just disappear into the night. And it may even give, and Chris, this is on YouTube, so I'm not, I'm putting just a thought out there. Is that it may. Allow you the opportunity. To see your town. And to see basically the good you've done for it. And to see it through its final meeting. So Michelle basically is starting after town meeting with a clean slate. I don't know how the board feels about it. I'm just putting this out there. It's just my, I think about these things, especially in light of all the. The last week since last select board meeting. And I don't know how Michelle feels about this. And I don't know how the board feels about this. It's just a thought I want to put out there because I feel it would. Most likely be a positive and set Michelle off on a straight course. If, again, this is subject to what Chris thinks, Ellen, I'm, again, I'm putting this up there.
Mr. Senior, would you opine?
I'm happy to do whatever the board wants me to do. The, the, the. And, and if it's helpful, that's great. The, the, the significant difference between town meeting and a select board meeting is that Dan runs it, they, they, Dan's the moderator. Uh, he's actually come close to evicting people who go and start making public comments. And I think you've already set up the big articles for, you know, to be covered like. You're handling Ellen, the, 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 the Oxford School, then I believe Brian and Frank are. And, and, and others are presenting on the RTF. So I, again, if you want me there even just to be sitting there, that's fine. But it's really up to the board. I'm, I'm willing to do whatever you feel is appropriate.
I was just asking Chris what would help Michelle during the transition. You know, to start off and you know these things in and out, you've conducted a number of town meetings, especially this town. I realize. Temperatures high and I'm not trying to put you in the hot seat. God knows. It's, it's, I, you know, and Dan is a tough moderator. I just think. And I, I'd like to hear Michelle's opinion on it as well, if possible, and I don't mean to be superseding any one of the board members or you. Is. I don't know. It could be a help for Michelle. It could be a help for you. And. You know, sends a message that. Neither you or this board or this town will be pushed around to a degree. It's still your floor and you are still the town manager. So again, I, it's, I, then I would, I'd like to hear what Michelle and you. I, again, I was just putting something out there, guys.
I, I think John has his hand up too.
For God's sakes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are working on an agreement to kind of wrap up Chris's employment with the town and. That will be discussed in executive session at the end of this discussion, but I think one of the things that we wanted to. Work out in the agreement were the specific terms of the transition, and I'm going to respectfully suggest that we. Defer that discussion to executive session.
I agree. Okay, so.
I do, it's Julie. I have a question. If, if Michelle will not be in executive session, then I agree with Paul. Would be nice just to get a sense from Michelle on whether or not. She really feels like she needs Chris's support at town meeting.
Madam Chair, I think we could invite Michelle into that part of the. Executive session for at least a portion, give her the opportunity to weigh in on that.
I agree.
Executive session.
I agree.
Perfect. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay, so, um, we'll get back to the agenda item. So may I have a motion to appoint Michelle Leary? As the interim town manager for the town of Cohasset.
Oh, moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, we need to do a roll call vote. We, we already have a second. We need to do a roll call vote because we're on a Zoom platform.
Paul Grady, I.
Mr. Plex?
Chris Plex, I.
Ms. Rollins?
Julie Rollins, I.
Mr. Farag?
David Farag, I.
And Ellen Mar, I. Congratulations and, and more importantly, thank you, Michelle. Thank you. Um, I think it's a testament to your dedication to the town. And, um, I, I know that Chris has, has trained you well and you guys have been a very good team. Balancing each other's strengths. With, with, you know, your, your own skills and aptitudes and. We've been fortunate for all this time to have the two of you together. So I have every confidence, Michelle, that you will continue on in a very successful way.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay. So next is the public statement for a review. So this is, and we have to remember that we are in open session. And I had circulated. To everyone, this is, this is not the joint statement for the town manager. Release for, for, for Chris's. That statement that I sent out, this, this is in response to some social media posts. And. What transpired, what was purported to have transpired at the end of the meeting on October the 28th. I have received some counsel quickly from Carolyn who has, is wrapping up. Well, motions for a town meeting she has tomorrow. And. Her perspective is, and John, I, I don't think you have it. I could forward it to you. Are you interested in reading it? Mr. Clifford?
I don't think I've seen. From you, Madam Chair.
Okay, let me see if I can. Can I just log out? No, I'm still here. Okay. All right. I just sent it to you, Mr. Clifford. Okay, so, um. I, I'm sure everyone is aware of. What, what has been on, um, social media. And everyone has had, hopefully has had a chance to view the, the video. Of our meeting on, on Tuesday evening and. The accusation is beyond egregious and is harmful. And. Should be responded to. The degree to which the response comes is what we need to discuss. And again, let's remember we're, we're in an open session. And if we want to be the leaders in. Turning. The temperature down a bit. Perhaps what the draft I sent is a bit. Much. So. And I'm, I'm just. Put, putting it out there, um, you know, we always have to look at unintended consequences. And we're dealing with the unintended consequences of, of someone who, who did something or said something. Um, and we also have to remember that the threshold. For public servants is higher in terms of. Harm than it is for a private individual. It has been suggested that any specific identification. Of an individual or a group should be removed. As in the second paragraph. And. Re. Reworded with community groups instead of that named group.
Hey Ellen, who suggested that?
Town council.
Okay. And, and the reason was just to turn down the temperature?
Yes, we, we have a, a higher standard. As public officials. And. We, so we just have to be cognizant of that.
Oh yeah. Do you mean like in terms of how we're acting and how we comport ourselves?
Correct.
Yes, okay.
So. A, and anything coming from the board needs approval by the board. Okay, I can't, I can't hear Julie. Is every, everyone here the same thing, the garble?
Yeah.
I think she's in a bad area.
Okay. So, um. We do have an audience. So I don't know if. Members want to.
Oh, sorry, guys. Sorry, guys. Thank you.
Okay, I don't know if members want to review and send edits back. As individuals, we are all free to respond as we feel. Compelled to respond. But.
I feel it's worded perfectly. And I don't think that you're doing any sort of misidentification. Because. It is the people within this group that are putting up these posts. And I don't think that what is going out is wrong. I disagree with counsel. Is that because? Where's the stop? And we're a board. Yes, we're held to a higher standard. Maybe there's some legalities involved, but there is none in that because that's there. And that is where it's coming from. And. Is it right? To say things that are completely untrue. Mischaracterized, malign. Out now lie, and I'll say it to whoever's on the meeting. And harm the reputation. I'll say that on the main, I guess, uh, uh, focus on this one due to the post, but. This digs a little deeper than that. In various posts, this affects people's reputations in a town regardless. And I think that the board and the people that have been quote unquote named in this are holding themselves to a higher standard. I don't think there's been responses or fire backs or, or fights. But I think the town as a whole is responsible. For defending its own, for the people that are quote unquote, working for the town. Volunteering for the town, volunteering their time. And this affects livelihoods, it affects reputations, it affects. Could get down to physicalities. So. I would stand by that. And I personally would be disappointed if that was taken out.
And Ellen, just for clarity, I'm, I'm looking at the document. The portion that we're talking about taken out is what?
Is. The, the second paragraph. The, the second, the, the second paragraph is in addition to what town council originally recommended.
Okay.
I wrote it. Her recommendation is in the. Third line from the top. To not identify specifically. But to replace the beginning of that sentence with community groups.
I mean. I, I just worry about getting pulled into a, what is effectively a Facebook back and forth. I mean, it's unfortunate. The way this is happening, I just. I hate to get sucked into something that's going on on Facebook when we're trying to get a lot of other things done, so. I, I, I think something high level, making the point that some inappropriate comments were made. We can encourage people to see for themselves what actually happened. Because I, I, I hope that's something everyone will respect as opposed to characterizations of what happened. I just want to make sure we're sticking to what I think is what we all want. To take the temperature down a bit. Punching back, and I'm not saying this is punching back, isn't the way we want to go. We want to say, hey. What was accused, if you look at the tape. Make up your own mind.
Mr. Farag?
I was just look, looking at it. I don't know if. It regarded, did, did the council say to remove the name of the group and just put community groups or something? Is that what you're trying to say?
Yes.
Yeah, I would probably agree with that. I mean, the question is, I don't know what, what the extent of the group is, who's in it and not. We know who posts from it, but. But I wouldn't want to hit with a broad brush, the whole group depending upon if there's people sitting at home who. Might loosely be affiliated with it and they're, and they're not a part of the, the situation at all.
Made by the group?
No.
No, it was made by an individual. So I, I think that part, you know, that council said would probably be. Uh, good, but I think everything else fits. Everything else looks like it, it makes sense.
So the, the, the second paragraph i- is what I inserted. Council wrote the first paragraph.
Yeah.
And the third and the fourth paragraph. And. The, the, the con, the conversation is, you know. The fact that. These are not, th- these posts and these, you know, this, this is an unfounded accusation that, that, that did not happen, but it's not the first. And the concern is it's not going to be the last. Whether. Town officials from any board or committee. Or, or any employee, when they continued to be attacked. There, there was a, a, a post today. Saying select board met, two select board members are on the take. Uh, it, it's just, it's just. Not productive. You know, and we all live in this community and we all go to the same supermarkets and to this, to the same events. You know, um, there'll be the, the Jingle Ball, well, we used to call it the Jingle Ball Walk on the day after Thanksgiving with the kids. There's the Village Stroll, there's the tree. We, we see each other all the time. And this, this. This rhetoric is not, is not productive. And it begins to affect people and their individual lives and their families. And. That's. You, you know, we're elected officials. There's some, there, there's some stuff that, okay, we have to take it. But there's other stuff that, that no, we, we shouldn't have to take it, you know? And being accused of, um, being on the take or being corrupt. Or things like that. It, it, it just doesn't sit well. I'm sorry. It, it doesn't sit well and. There, those kinds of comments are the output of original posts that, that are, are not based on issues, so. It, it's a struggle. It, it, it's a, it's a struggle. And. I wish we could just talk about the issues. I wish we could just have a roundtable with people who are interested and say, hey, what do we, what do you think about this? But we've heard public comment and that's all we've heard, like, that there's been no, there's been no conversation. I don't know about anybody else. No one's called me to say, hey, will we have a talk about the budget? Can we get together for call? I mean, no, no one has, so. But, but this is what happened, so.
Hey Ellen, can you hear me now? It's Julie.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, oh, great. Um, I would like to speak openly about this topic, but I don't feel as, I don't feel safe. Saying my comments in an open meeting format. So if we are permitted to discuss this topic in executive session, then I would feel comfortable sharing my views there. Otherwise, I, I don't feel safe. To do so here. I've been targeted online as well. People trolling my, my every move on Facebook, which is sick and twisted. I'm nervous for my family. Um, I'm just feeling very. Just, I'm just feeling really uneasy about what's going on. And I don't feel comfortable speaking openly in open session. Thanks.
So I, I did ask Attorney Murray. Unfortunately, this is not something unless Mr. Clifford now having read what's been written, has a different perspective. He was also at the meeting, so he was a firsthand witness. For executive session. Attorney Murray indicated she did not feel that this fell within any of the exemptions.
The only way to speak about. A complaint involving another person is to invite that person in. And. That doesn't seem like would, that would be the best solution. Um, the person could also ask to have the discussion in open session.
That'd be well. That'd be well.
I, I would suggest, and the board can consider this, is scheduling this for an agenda item. At a future meeting, at your next meeting. And you don't necessarily have to give. The person the opportunity to weigh in if you put it there, but the board can consider exactly what comments you want to make. In response to this incident, and I, I agree, it's a serious incident, it's a serious problem. Um, but the most effective tool that you all have is, is the bully pulpit. Of speaking publicly from your seats as select board members, and I think. If you all wanted to take some time and consider what you want to say in response to this, that may be better. If you schedule it as an open session item, you don't have to give. You know, this person. You don't have to give any complaints like this oxygen, you can state your feelings on. A specific incident in the general tenor where you think the. Public discourse is going, but I think you would have the opportunity to do that in, in open session.
Mister Clifford, I'm going to say something of that. Where I disagree with you entirely. Because it's not your reputation, it's the reputation of this board, you attended some meetings. Where we're having arrows thrown. You have a board member saying she doesn't feel safe right now, and you're asking, put it on an agenda for a future meeting, while it still percolates out there. We're coming into town meeting and we're not following up with response? You've sat through the meeting, you saw what happened the other night, they came, this group to attack. Belittle, dehumanize a human being. And then take credit for that, for that person's departure. I for one publicly am saying I'm disgusted with it, but it's also my reputation, the reputation of the chair, people that serve on committees. And to schedule it and sit there, then they're welcome to attend those meetings and where it turns into one of the free for all. At some point, it's got to stop. All right, and it is the genesis of a certain group. That's created the tsunami. And this is also since, again, I'm putting myself up in the forefront. Being accused. By a member of this group. In public, but we can't name that person that wrote that post, I assume. Um, where we well should, since my name's plastered all over there, since the chair. Uh, another member of, of different committees, a fellow select board member is put up there by name. And you ask us, I say, I'll be honest with you, Mister Clifford, I don't have the time, the energy or the patience for that. All right, I take my reputation very seriously. As we all should and do, I do not want to be going into a store. And then having someone point out, say, that's the guy that picks on a person with a handicap, or. Someone's saying that's a person that covers up for a, a, an issue that happened some years ago. Um, that's the person that helps run our town, um, that person shouldn't be liking a post. Because they're intelligent enough to like a post. And then put it off for an agenda meeting, get a lineup of the same people that will come in. And throw the same stones and barbs, and I don't know if you've read some of these things in the past, we're not engaging in them. But what they're saying is we're corrupt, it's a powerful select board, um. And I will say this publicly, because I'm saying it, I didn't say what I'm accused of saying, I'm not even close to saying it. But if I was to say, a fellow board member sitting next to me, didn't hear that. Ms. Leary didn't hear that. Ms. Maher didn't hear that, Ms. Rollins. You know what would happen? That's just the select board covering up for one of their own. And it's an out and out lie. It's a mistruth, I'm disgusted with the whole operation, I am disgusted with what's happened. I don't mind engaging, I don't mind disagreement. I, people can vote me down, vote me out, or vote any one of us, but these are people, I, and being aligned with a person, I'm, I've. That, that a person that's dedicated more time to this town than me or many other people. And worked thanklessly is being called my plant. I'm horrified with it, Mister Clifford, all right? And I want.
If I could.
You and I, honest with you, I don't agree with the thing you're saying.
Okay.
If I could clarify, what I was saying was, if, if, if board members aren't comfortable making comments today, then. It may be better, and one board member expressed that, is Rollins, but. If you're comfortable making comments and you want to speak to it today, that's perfectly fine, Mister Grady, I'm not suggesting that you shouldn't. And candidly, I've been doing this for thirty years, thirteen of which is town administrator. All of those same things were written and said about me as well, so I can appreciate your position, it is, I am not unsympathetic to it. I also know that, you know, fighting this social media stuff can be a, you know, it. It can be a no win situation as well, again, I think you use the. The platform that you all have as board members to speak to these issues, but, um. If, if to the degree that you're not comfortable, you can, in, individual board members could defer the opportunity to later on, but if you're comfortable speaking about it today, I think you should be blunt. I think you should be candid, Mister Grady.
I'll never be anything but Mister Clifford. But it bothers me that a fellow board member is uncomfortable speaking about what they feel right now for fear of. I don't know, I don't spend time on the social medias, I don't respond. Unless they, I responded once when they attacked town employees, because I will defend the things I care about. But I will also say, no one in this group is out there round tabling with these people. And so that's left them a line of attack. That is unfair, unfounded, untrue, and is harmful to reputations, or. Even you, one person just said to themselves, a board member feels unsafe. Making commentary, what does that tell you? In the environment that's been created by a group of individuals that happen to be named? And I think it should be. I personally think that the person who was accusing me should be named, I'm not looking for that. But this is all a subset. And there has to be a stop. I'm, I, I, I am horrified by what Ms. Rollins just had to say. About feeling unsafe. And I am thoroughly disgusted by it. And I don't think it should go on another hour, to be honest with you. That's where I'm standing right now.
So.
And if I have to, sorry Ellen, I don't need Madam Chair to. Yeah, but I'm saying this publicly, if I have to get my own attorney, attorney involved, I will do it. These are reputations, lives, families at stake. That are being held up, put on the cross for something they never did or didn't do. Their only sin, and I'm speaking. For anybody that serves this town is in caring enough to get on and serve the town. That's it. You don't have to like them, you don't have to care about them, you can disagree with them. I've been voted down, but, and I've said this to people, but it doesn't mean that I am gonna take my anger out on the people that voted me down. I'm still gonna consider my friends, I'm gonna care about them. All right, that we happen to disagree, that's a democracy, that's how our town should be run. By listening to consensus, and you know what, I can learn some things as well. But what's being done to me, not in me, and now this board, these town. People that serve is disgusting, it's beyond the pale. And it affects livelihoods, lives and reputations. And future reputations. I can't speak enough, I want them named, and if not, I'm just saying, I'll, I'll. You know, I have, I, uh, move, move on myself, I, but I think it is unfair not to.
Okay, all right, um. Mister Farag, uh, you haven't really weighed in yet.
I, I think that a, a, a statement is certainly appropriate, uh, regarding the matter and. Go from there, I mean, I think with, wi- with anybody, if they have something. Um, issue wise, that, 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 that differs on any board, um. It's important to talk about that issue, uh, and the hyperbole, sarcasm, other things of that nature, uh, only. Only lose credibility on the argument that one wants to make, so as much as you want to. Uh, people can get their emotions up and, and through the history of Cohasset, we've had many elections that have been heated, whether they've been nonpartisan or partisan or otherwise, but. Um. You know, I, I, I don't think it, it, it helps with some of the, the languages being used and, and frankly, over the top. Um, and, and that people should. You wouldn't, it, you wouldn't want this expression, uh, to come from your children, so why would we want it to come from adults? And I think that people need to look at that and try and keep their behavior within the, within the boundaries of Cohasset like behavior. Um, and, and not some of the things that we've seen in the, in the last few meetings, so. And again, things can, things can get hot and emotional, which is fine, but I, I think, uh, stick, stick to the issues, and I think everyone would be better served for that.
Okay, um. So. You know, we need to make a decision as a board if we want all or part of this. Release, I see Ms. Murray has joined us, um, I, I tried to articulate some of the concerns you had. Carolyn on this, um. So. We've heard Ms., uh, Ms. Rollins doesn't want to speak up, I completely understand it, I have concerns as well, I, I have. You know, not for me personally. But I don't want to get into too many details, but, but this affects beyond my front door. And has, as of this morning, um, so. It's. I, I agree philosophically with Mister Farag that, yeah, we should stick to the issues. But the issues aren't being stuck to. And it has become personal, and it has become pointed, and it has become filled with mistruths. You know, if, if someone said, oh, well, the chair wasn't prepared for a meeting. Okay, well, maybe I wasn't, that, that could be the truth, but, um. The, some of these things. Dig and have been ongoing, and I, I think that's the, the point is that they have been ongoing and repeated over time. And we have taken the higher road. And. Not to respond at some point, um. Is that a signal of victory to the others? Um, I, 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 I'm not quite sure the higher road is appreciated or respected.
No, I said, I said, uh, definitely, uh, uh, go with the statement, uh, but I was saying in general for everyone, not just for the board, but for. Respondents or anybody on any other committee, um, that that's the way that we should comport ourselves, it's okay to get angry from time to time, but. Um, some of the, the charges that are made are, are obviously, you know, salacious and don't have any ground to stand on. Uh, and it, you know, I mean, the, you know, when you look at some of the stuff online, I mean, there's, there's people saying we should secede and go back to Hingham. Or we should have a mayor form a government or all these other, you know, wacky things which are absolutely crazy, um, but that. That is separate and distinct from when you're, when you're personally attacking people, um. You know, regarding, regarding some of the, the matters that you've been talking about, so I think the statement, uh, passed along and, and it should go out and then go from there.
Okay, so, so the question is that the statement in total as it was sent out? Or, um. We can go by paragraph? Is everyone okay with paragraph one?
Yeah, let me look at it here.
Um, I'm, I apologize and I'm not able to read it along with you all while I'm driving, um. But I, one. Point I wanted to make is that when we name a community group as we've done, it insinuates that it's. That's what the whole group, uh. Believes in, and like, I, I feel, I, I don't think it would be. In our best interest or accurate to name a group of, of potentially, uh. Wonderful people who have not chosen to be inappropriate online. Um, so I would caution against using the name of a larger group, there could be very good people associated with that group, and I, I wouldn't want to, um. To bring this, uh, charge against them. I am more, uh, I would be more interested in naming specific individuals only. The specific individuals who've made comments that are beyond reprehensible. Um, and would fall into defamation of character categories. Those names I think should be named explicitly. Um, and I don't think we should name an entire group. And I'm just gonna mute myself now, because I'm, I'm driving.
Yep.
Ellen, if I could add an interjection?
Yes.
I do support putting in the group, because that's the genesis of all this, but. I would agree with Ms. Rollins. If we were to name the individuals that are posting these, all right, there are three or four. One out and out lied, and so I am open to that, if we name them individually. Because it's there in writing, there's no taking it back. And they named. All of us individually, they threatened one of us. And so if it's the same people, yes, I'd be off for that, if it was, if you want to break it down, maybe there's some kind people in this group, I don't know. Um. But I think it starts with the, the, the person who put it together, down to the people that are posting these. Um, because those are the ones treading in dangerous waters that aren't, that are unfair and untrue.
I agree with you, Paul, I, I can, I connect the dots as well, I, I just think. This is an incident where. Someone made a personal accusation. I, I hope we're at a point where this person regrets making that personal accusation. I think connecting that personal accusation to the group that this person was with. Might be a step too far, because the group didn't make a personal accusation, the person made a personal accusation. I'm splitting hairs, I know.
No, I'm agreeing with you there, but I'm also agreeing with Ms. Rollins, with Julie, then.
Well, what, what I said, what I said was that we should, my recommendation is not to name the group, because. It, it wasn't a statement made by the group, it was a statement, these are statements made by individual members who happen to be part of a group. And that's why I think they should be named specifically, I'm just responding to Chris.
I'm agreeing with you, and that's Chris, I would, I would, I would back that. Cooler heads prevail, but, uh, in, in the case of Ms. Rollins, pulling me in a notch, um. But I would say this. That the members of that group that have. Spread these things, made a fellow board member feel threatened and unsafe. Uh, damaged and sullied. My reputation, the chair, future people, people that are affected by us, including our families, our children. Um. Our livelihoods. Should be named. Uh, a person, and I, and I'll say this, is, uh, that, that's given so much to this town, being called a plant. When in all honesty, whoever's on this meeting, if anything, I should be her plant, she's given so much time to this town. But that's not the case. And. I agree with, if we name them individually. I'm content with that, so we don't have to blanket or color a whole group of maybe six or seven people, I don't have a handle on that. And I'm not a, a huge amount of interest, but I do that, the, the, the people that went after Ms. Rollins, that went after me. That went after the chair. Other board and committee members should be named, they've named us. And it's in writing. This is, that's fair, or we should be taking. Literally, I, I'd be, I'd be about, I'd be for that.
So I, I, I wanna, I wanna pivot this and, and come at it with, with a little bit of a different perspective. Is the fact that on. Monday evening, we have special town meeting. And we have. Um, a couple, every article is important, but we have, we have a couple of articles that are critically important, um. In, in order for us to continue to move forward and all of the progress that has been made and, um. I, I don't want. I, I don't want this to be that, I don't want town meeting to be the hangover of this, if that makes any sense. And, um, and I'm not saying we don't say something, okay? Because I, I believe that we should, but we also have to look at our ultimate responsibility. In seventy-two hours, in, in terms of, of town meeting. And. What may or may not happen now, they can't, they, you know, noth- nothing can happen on the floor because the moderator will, will control the floor. But he won't control the lobby and he won't control the parking lot and he won't control Facebook, uh, or social media. And, you know, I'm sorry to say, but I, it, we have to, we have to consider, we have to consider that.
I think we are considering it because some of the proponents of some of these key articles are the ones writing mistruths, misstatements. And lies. I think we are considering it. And that's what it is. Some of the proponents of some of these articles that were working and that are key points in what's going, how this town's gonna go forward. Are the ones writing these lies, accusations, mistruths, slanders. So I am, again, I, I will stand by that. I think they should be named. It's in writing out there. It's there. It's in the public domain. So this board is not doing anything by answering back to the charges levied against us or the threats made by individuals. That happened to becoming maybe to town meeting for an agenda item. So. Again, I said this earlier. Were the victories? I mean, you know, in what they're doing. I, I don't understand it. Instead of joining in discourse. Instead, it's been an attack. As scurrilous as I can ever imagine, and this is not, I don't believe what any of us signed up for. We knew we were gonna get disagreements. We knew that, but to get attacked with hatred, slander and lies and threats. Impplied or otherwise. Deserves response. Not a blanket response.
Okay, um. So, so we, we, we have to, we have to move on here at, at this, this point. So I, I need some indication. You know, thumbs up or thumbs down, um. With the, the one change in identification in paragraph two. Or do we, you know? So there's, there's four paragraphs, um. Is the statement as written with that one change? Is that acceptable to everyone?
Where you talk about naming it, the exchange and taking the name of the group out, putting individual names in instead, then yes. The people that made, it's there. All right?
Yeah.
Then I would support.
Personally, personally, I, 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 I feel that. The impetus for, for, for this, this statement really is paragraph one. And that is the most egregious of everything that's been said. And to, to keep the focus on, on that is to me what is important. And I think that, um. Paragraph two doesn't have the specificity that paragraph one has. And paragraph three, um, correctly articulates. You know, turning the temperature down and then paragraph four. I, I think is a nice wrap-up. Paul, I, I hear what you're saying. I understand it, um, but I, I think paragraph one keeps the focus on. Keeps the focus on where it should be.
Ellen, Ellen, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I mean, we've sat, we, we, we've gone through months of attacks. And, and haven't felt this compelled, but that, that this is just so egregious and this will stay focused. On that.
Um, I do, I can't, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at it right now, but I, I don't wanna, um, leave it an open thing, like go ahead and watch the video and choose for yourself. Um, because nobody has time to go watch a video, uh, and no one, most people aren't gonna do it. Um, so I'd rather make it very black and white. Council's reviewed the video as well as X number of other people. It is categorically false that this happened and we wanted to make this statement. Publicly and if, we wanted to make an official statement that this did not happen based on review of all of the evidence. And, 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 you know, Carolyn, please speak up if you disagree with me. But I think agreed, keep it on the main topic that, that this is about. We don't have to get sidetracked on the Facebook silliness. And, um, just make a very clear, very strong statement against this. And, and let the town know, we've reviewed it. We've taken it seriously and we have concluded. This happened. Or didn't happen and not leave it up to people to watch the video themselves. Uh, that just seems too weak to me.
That's implying that I was investigated. And so what I'm hearing right now is a sigh of relief, universal, going across the boards on that group, like whoop, we're gonna skate.
No, we can do it later, Paul. We can do it after town meeting. If the posts don't come down.
But I'm not gonna engage in Facebook. I don't want to, all right? But I'm hearing across the board, anyone who's listening to this meeting, probably a sigh of relief. Dodge that bullet. All right? That's what I see. And I'm saying it bluntly to anybody out in radio land.
Well, Paul, let them, let them think that this doesn't mean that we're not doing anything about it. It just means we're not doing anything about it before town meeting.
Showing that I was investigated and we determined, it was determined that I didn't do something. That's what happens. That's how serious it is. That's what we're determining right now, that they.
Exactly. Didn't do it.
They did their investigation. We took it seriously. We investigated Mr. Grady and everything else that was said. And we found out, guess what? It's not true. All right? Without being able to face my accuser or name them. Or anyone else on this board who's been accused or a maligned or people that served the town accused and maligned by certain individuals. And I've emphasized, it's in writing there. All right? It is out there in the domain, the public domain. It is sitting there. With the names of the authors on them and I have screenshots of each and every one of them. So that's it. And to take quote-unquote the high ground, but imply that I was investigated.
No, no, sorry. I don't mean that. I don't mean investigate you.
Finish here. I was investigated for what? That's what I'm upset about.
No, no, I, I didn't say you were investigated. I said, no, 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 no.
That we took it seriously and we investigated Mr. Grady. We found out there's no there.
Oh, no, no, that's not what I mean. Oh, that's not what I mean.
And that, that, that's not what it says, Paul, and, and this first paragraph has, hasn't really, hasn't changed. So, um.
No, I'm just saying we, we reviewed the tape and we know that the, what the person said online was false. We reviewed the tape. That's all I'm saying. There's no investigation. I just mean we reviewed the tape. Town council reviewed the tape. It's categorically false. And not saying, oh, go ahead and watch the video yourself, townspeople and make up your own mind. I just wanna say, we watched the tape. We have wit-, you know, witness statements from everyone who was at the table. We know he didn't do it. So, but that's our statement. Like to come out strong and say it didn't happen. This person's a liar. That's what I'm suggesting. Not that there was an investigation into you, Paul. No, I'm sorry if, if you thought that's what I meant. No.
And they're at it, again, I'm gonna repeat it, then I will keep my.
Okay.
They're looking at it as, okay, sigh of relief. We're not called out. Let's continue to do what we do. We'll be a little more circumspect about it this time.
Attorney Murray has her hand up.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to say for the record, I actually have not watched the video. I mean, I was at your meeting for that portion of it. I haven't watched the video. I'm happy to do that, but I think that kind of goes hand in hand with, um. Paul's feeling like that becomes an investigation, like counsel looked at the tape and verified this or something, um. Honestly. I think anyone can look at it. I don't think it has to be me, you know, other members of the board. I, I trust your descriptions of it. That the, the video isn't going to lie. It accurately reflects what. Did and more importantly, did not happen. But if it's important to the board that I review the video and that the statement somehow be modified to, um, to, to reflect that, I'm happy to do that before the statement goes out.
But Carolyn, I don't think it carries any more weight if. Are the person who says, I've reviewed it, it's not there, or if the board says, we were there and we reviewed the video, it didn't happen.
Right.
And following up on my earlier comment, and by the way, if you wanna look for yourself, you can too. This accusation that was made has no basis. And then go on to, listen, we're volunteers. We're trying to help. We have families. We live here. We don't understand why we're being attacked while we're just trying to help. Uh, which is all captured in that last paragraph.
Yeah.
I, I think that's the message. An accusation was made. It was baseless. You can look for yourself and see that it was baseless. What are you people trying to do to us?
So then that would be paragraphs one. And three.
Yes. And, and again, Paul, I agree with you. I can connect the dots where this is all coming from, but. The specific issue here is from that individual, not from the group.
That's why I said name them individually. I said I would agree with that. We've been named individually. Certain members of the board, certain members of committees that volunteer their time. We've been named individually. As I specified, it's in writing. It's out there. It's in the public domain. Now, this is my reputation. It is the reputation and well-being of other people. So I'm of belief that the people that wrote it then individually should be called out and listed. That's what I'm saying. You can get rid of the, the, the name of the group. But those words are out there. They're hurtful. They're mean, they're untrue, and they speak not just to me, but to a number of people. And again, you have a fellow board member who is scared to speak in public. Because of fear of reprisal. And that person that put that fear into a fellow board member's head should be called out. Individually, as should the other one who wrote about nefarious activities, about plants, about, uh, about cover-ups, about. That's what it is. And going into town meeting, I think, and I am convinced. That may actually put some light, shed some light on some of these quote-unquote proponents or, or antagonists, whatever you wanna call, whatever they, whatever it is. That would shed some light on that fact. Remember, we were named individually. And I think this board, these committees, these poor people who dedicate their time have taken the high ground. But they're not allowed an opinion. They're not allowed a like if they engage in social media. We haven't engaged in social media. But we've been the target of some really bad things. And I stand on that. And so if. The board feels. That maybe take away the group name, but the people, including. The genesis of that group should be named individually. There's maybe some very fine people. I don't know. But the ones who've written what they've written should be called out by name. Same as we were for something we didn't do or for having an opinion or a thought.
Well, I, I, I hear what you're saying, Paul, but you, you know, paragraph one is very, very specific to a specific incident. And paragraph two is in general, and I think if we're gonna do that, then. And, and, and I, we have to go back specifically to each incident instead of the, um, generalization that paragraph two represents. And if we're gonna say so-and-so said this about so-and-so on this date, we have to be very specific.
And?
And I, I, I don't, I don't have time to do it. Okay? I, I, I just, I ju-, I don't have time and I don't really have the desire. And, and I'm sorry to disappoint you in saying this, to go back and re-, read some of these vile comments. I, I really don't. I've read them once. Okay? I, I took myself off Facebook about five weeks ago. I was missing the pictures of mine at light in Sandy Beach every morning that I would see. And so I got back on because the thing seemed quiet and now it's vile and disgusting again. And I, I, I'm gonna go back off it and I'm not, I, I, I can't read it. It, it, it's, um. You, you know, I just think to myself, consider the source and that, that's all I have to do. I, I think. I think paragraph one is powerful. I think it sends a very strong message. And then I think paragraph four, um, three and four to an extent say, this is who we are as a board and this is where we're going forward.
Then at the very least, I would put up the person that came and attacked me. That's pretty spelled out pretty clearly, along with the video. Put that up there.
That, that, um, Attorney Murray or Clifford in, and, um. Would that be appropriate in the first paragraph? To name the individual?
Yeah. I mean, ultimately. This is your decision to make is whether or not you want to name people, um. I think anyone who is following this knows exactly. Who the individual is.
Carolyn, I don't mean to interrupt, but I mean, it, if we, and Paul, you're gonna hate this, so I apologize in advance. If we're trying to take the temperature down, if we're trying to be the adults in the room. The right thing to do is say, hey, this happened. It was false. You can look for yourself. We're not gonna name the individual. And then close with, we're trying to help the town. We ran for this, for our, our individual elections because we wanted to help. We're not corrupt. If you wanna talk to us, by all means, talk to us. We're gonna get back to business now. If you wanna take the temperature down, that's the way to do it without naming the individual, because by naming the individual. We take a personal attack and punch right back. And I know in this case it's justified because they attacked us first, but. If we're trying to take the temperature down, that's the way to do it, I think.
Okay.
Chris, it's Julie. I agree with you. I agree with you. I like that idea. I also like the idea of let's, let's get back to work because one of the things that this one particular individual. Claimed of all of us publicly at the last meeting was that we weren't working. And that she had contacted every single one of us to complain about particular issues and that we had ignored her. And I'll tell you, I've never heard her, seen her, received an email, a phone call. I've received nothing from her. And to say, oh, go ahead now and get back to work or get to work, like figure out whether you wanna do a job and get to work was so insulting. Um, when I have no clue who this woman is. So I, I like that message, Chris. Thanks.
And, and, and Julie, FYI, it's, it's a false statement and Attorney Murray knows this because she's in possession of all of the correspondence I had with that individual. Um, answering her questions, attending to the needs to the best of the ability that I could. And I don't know, there's fifteen or eighteen email correspondences, so, um, that, that's blatantly false. So in the, in the interest, in the interest of moving on, um, may I have a motion to, um, approve? A release from the Cohasset Select Board encompassing. Paragraphs one and four. Okay. So we don't have a motion.
Could you repeat the motion again?
Please.
May I have a motion to approve a release from the Cohasset Select Board encompassing paragraphs one and four?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Rollins, second?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Roll call, please.
Chris Plack's eye.
Mr. Farag?
David Frog, eye.
Ms. Rollins?
Julie Rollins, eye.
Mr. Grady?
His democracy will work. I'm gonna say no.
Okay, and Ellen Marr, eye. Okay. Um. We will. Recraft this and get it out and then, um. My, my recommendation is we post it on Town of Cohasset Facebook page.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. Um. I, I'd like, I'd like to thank Mr. Grady for his passion and his defense of.
Please don't thank, don't, please don't thank me. I. that's all.
Okay. Alright, so at, at this point, the, um, the next article, the, the next item on the agenda, um, and I just lost my agenda, um. Was it an amendment, uh, to the motion for article six? Someone else have the agenda up? My computer just stopped. Anyone else have the agenda?
We had just, we had discussed that, um, article six, but, um, the amendment was out of scope. So we are no longer in need of discussing that.
Right, so, so just so the whole board knows that there was, there was a, a recommendation, article six is the RTF Enterprise Fund. And there was a recommendation that, that it, uh, we prepare a secondary motion to create a revolving fund, but uh, the creation of a revolving fund is out of the scope of the original article, so it, it's a moot point. Um, so at this point, um, I believe that's all of the, um, items for open session. We're gonna move into executive session. It, I didn't see an email from Tracy for, um, a separate link. Did she send one?
It came relatively late, Ellen.
Yeah, she did. Um, I can, I can forward it to you.
It came late.
I don't see it.
I don't see it either.
Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna
Oh, when I say late, I mean nine, ten AM.
Yeah, there was one that came for three and then there was another one that came for three thirty, I think. So it came this morning, but they just have different start times, I think.
Okay.
The invitation arrived at nine, ten AM, Ellen.
Um, I, I don't have it.
I, I don't have it.
Uh, you're both in the two line.
Here it is, okay. Alright, so we will exit, um, the first one and we will move into executive session. Can I have a motion to move into executive session?
So moved. I don't have the link. Does somebody have the link or they can move us in?
Look, look on your calendar, David, on your email.
Oh, okay, on the calendar. Thanks.
My reminder just popped up.
Okay, good.
Okay, so who made the motion?
Chris Plax made the motion.
And the second was Mr. Farag, did you second the motion?
Yes, second.
Okay, all in favor, roll call quickly, please?
Chris Plax, aye.
Ellen Marr, aye. Mr. Frog?
David Frog, aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Julie Rollins, aye.
Mr. Grady?
Oh, Grady, aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna exit this first and go to the second one.
Michelle, before we, uh, before we exit, Michelle, could you send the link because it's not on my calendar or in my inbox?
Sure, I'll forward it now. Michelle, could you free-forward it to me too, just so I have it handy? Because I'm in the car. Thank you.
See you in session.
Thank you.